Good evening, the Rowland Township Planning Board is now in session.
Call to order, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice of this meeting on the bulletin board of the municipal building, filing the notice with the township clerk and transmitting the notice to the Huntington County Democrat, the Courier-News, the Star-Ledger, and the Trenton Times.
Thank you, roll call please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geding.
Here.
Vice Chair, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Here.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Capa Pieri, she is asked to be excused, and Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Here.
Mr. James Miller.
Here.
And Mr. Glenn Sokolowski is asked to be excused as well. For board professionals, we have Board Attorney, Mr. John Bolardo.
Here.
Township Planner, Mr. Jeffrey Becarella.
Here.
Township Engineer, Mr. Rakesh Darji.
Present.
And Board Planner, Ms. Jessica Caldwell.
Here.
Here.
And the following board professionals have asked to be excused, Township Landscape Architect, Mr. John Morgan Thomas, and Traffic Consultant, Mr. Jay Troutman.
Okay, thank you. I just learned this evening that Mr. John McKay, I'm saying his last name right, who was a resident of Rowland Township, who was frequently here at our planning board meetings, he passed away just a week or two ago. And, and as we do the next step of this, because Mr. Bolardo and I put in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence, Mr. McKay was particularly thrilled and commented to me, and I think others, that we had instituted that. Because for some reason, the planning board didn't do the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. So I just want to acknowledge Mr. McKay, he was here very, very frequently, so he will be missed. And with that, please rise, do the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, is any comments on reports? I don't have any report this evening, we've got a number of other things on the agenda. Anyone have any board comments this evening? No? Engineers' comments, anything, words of wisdom for us now? Planers' comments?
No comment.
Yep, we're going to hear from Jessica here in a few minutes, and attorneys' comments.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. In terms of correspondence, we have the ordinance adopting a redevelopment plan for an area of redevelopment known as the Mavroad Holding Redevelopment Plan, and supplementing and amending Article 13 entitled District Regulations of Chapter 296 entitled Land Development by adding a new section, 296-130.1, to be entitled MHR Mavroad Holding Redevelopment District. So this is a master plan consistency review. We had been provided some information yesterday, and I hope everybody has had an opportunity to take a look at. We received the draft of the ordinance, and then we received, part I think we got yesterday was the master plan, the redevelopment plan itself. And Taylor, thank you for providing hard copies for everybody, but we got them yesterday, so we had an opportunity to review those. So with that, I am going to ask our planner, Jessica Caldwell, to kind of walk us through your review on this, Jessica, because you wrote the report.
Yeah, absolutely. What I'd like to do is just go through the report briefly, and then discuss master plan consistency, and I can take any questions as well. As, as you mentioned, this ordinance 24-18 would provide zoning for Block 34, Block 84, Lot 34, which is located on Route 202 and 31, 99 US Route 202 and 31, which is currently a redevelopment area. So it would apply new district regulations, which would be known as the MHR Mavroad Holding Redevelopment District. And I'll just go through what the standards of this district are, and then highlight some of the changes from what the current zoning is, which is in the B5 low intensity highway district. So, under permitted uses, the proposal is essentially to create a somewhat more vibrant type of zone. Currently, there's retail permitted offices, and then some limited recreational type uses. So the proposal is to add manufacturing, processing, producing, and fabricating operations. It will also retain self-storage facilities, which are currently permitted. Expand a little on the commercial recreational uses, to include things like tamponade parks, climbing gyms, indoor sports facilities. It would retain public parks and public use-type facilities, childcare centers, solar and photovoltaic energy facilities, and professional business offices, as well as agriculture and horticulture, but also adding contractor trade storage with associated office space and wholesale retail and storage goods for retail sales, provided that all operations and activities are carried with, out within enclosed buildings. And that is the same requirement also for manufacturing and processing and producing, also with a limit of a maximum of 33% of storage of materials on the property, as well as a prohibited use of prohibiting warehouse and distribution facilities. So overall, the intent was to expand permitted uses to allow for a variety of additional uses, but also limit the capacity of uses that would be too intensive for the site or have negative impacts. As far as the standards for the zone, minimum lot area is five acres, where the current is 1.83. Minimum lot width is 500 feet, where the current is 200 feet. Front yard setback would be the same at 75 feet. The rear yard setback is proposed to be increased to 130 feet from 50 feet, and that is to provide for a rear yard landscape buffer of 100 feet to provide buffering from residential uses to the rear of this property on the other side of an existing railway. Side yard setbacks would generally be the same, however, there's a reduced internal setback if there's internally separate lots of three feet. Maximum height proposed is three stories on 50 feet, whereas two and a half stories and 35 feet is permitted currently. Maximum hard surface coverage is 60%, where 35% is permitted currently. Maximum floor area ratio is .40, where .15 is permitted currently. And again, we have the increased rear yard landscape buffer requirement of 100 feet, where uses are not permitted to be included within that 100-foot section. Parking standards are generally the same, with a few exceptions. The requirement for wholesale retail would be one space per 5,000 square feet, where the current requirement is three spaces per 1,000 square feet. And the parking requirement for self-storage facilities would be one space per 15,000 square feet, where the current requirement is one space per 6,000 square feet. Other standards would generally stay the same. With respect to loading, there is an addition of a maximum number of loading spaces, again, to try to limit impacts from the development or potential impacts. So there's a minimum of one loading space per tenant, but a maximum of one loading space per 20,000 square feet of building space, whichever is greater. And then if there's a self-storage use, the maximum number of loading spaces would be two for general loading spaces. There is a mobility requirement that if there's a traffic study that shows increase in traffic on the site, that there would be improvements made to the jug handle adjacent to the property at Everett's Road. There's also a requirement for a traffic study with any submission to the planning board, as well as some additional standards proposed, such as weight limits on Everett's Road, to be considered. Buffering requirements would follow the buffer fences and buffer yard standards of the site plan design standards. However, as the proposal is written, it would be a medium intensity, but the requirement is to shift it to a maximum intensity, which is the 100-foot buffer instead of a 75-foot buffer. Under tree protection and replacement would be required, as it is today. And all of the landscaping requirements would be the same, except for landscaping requirements for the parking area, where those would be shifted from 15% overall landscaping, interior landscaping requirement in a parking area to 5%. And then the number of islands would be reduced from one per eight spaces to one per 20 spaces. Otherwise, the landscaping standards stay the same. And the other standards, such as stormwater management, general design standards, lighting and signage would follow the site plan design sections of the ordinance. With respect to master plan consistency, there is a review within the redevelopment plan proposed. And we found that the plan is consistent with several goals of the master plan, which are listed on Page 4 of the redevelopment plan, but include limit growth to existing sewer plant capacity. The proposal would be serve by septic system on-site. Limit growth to existing school capacity, that would be no school children generated by any of the proposed uses. Limit growth to existing roadway capacities. There's a requirement for a traffic study, as well as a requirement that if traffic capacities increase, that there would be improvements to the jug handle at Everett's Road. Reduce the potential for new single-family residential development, that's not applicable here. Permit additional non-residential development, which this proposal does. And then recognizing historic growth and land uses of the area, which would provide for some consistency with adjacent semi-industrial type uses to the north of this property. And then promoting smart growth policies by promoting redevelopment of an existing developed property. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions or comments.
Okay, I guess, I should, thank you, Jessica, I guess I should note that this board had approved this parcel as an area in need of redevelopment back in 2020.
Yes, yes.
But now I think we need to get into a number of questions, and this is clarification for me, and possibly for other board members as well.
Okay.
This is not an application, this is a master plan consistency review. Yet, to me, there's an awful lot in here, that if an applicant came before us, they would have to present and meet certain standards on variances. Does this then waive that any applicant, because we don't have an applicant, at some point? Will, does the applicant get a buy on those variances in a future application? By virtue of the fact, if we, if we are to agree to this this evening, I'm not saying that we are, so wouldn't...
Well, I would say this, this establishes new zoning, so there wouldn't be any variances associated. What I was running through is what the differences are between
Yeah.
the proposed zone and the existing zone. So there, there wouldn't be variances per se, unless they were varying from the standards that we're proposing, then they would have variance. If that makes sense, I'm trying to, so it's not an application.
Yeah, right.
That committee went through a lot of extensive discussions about the designation as an area in need of redevelopment. So then, this is conforming to what was agreed upon in terms of specific to the site. So, if I have it correct, right, then what's in this proposal is stating specific to this property site.
Right, so it's just for this specific property, and they would still have to come before the board for site plan approval. And if they didn't meet any of these standards, they would need to request variances.
So I guess I'll start, I have extreme concern over this redevelopment, the redevelopment plan and the implementing ordinance. When Rowland Township developed that B5 zone, the business zone, it was really with the thought of we needed a transition to go from Flemington Circle down through 202, and as we get into more residential and agricultural areas, respect that area and try and reduce the amount of development that takes place, given that there's farm on preservation and recreation and other things going, and a school going on in that area. I'm just really concerned, while I acknowledge we blessed the movement forward to create now and implementing redevelopment plan after saying it was an area in need of redevelopment, I in my wildest dream would have never thought we'd see something this intensive come back before the board. You know, when I think about what are, what we're trying to accomplish in our township, you know, to go to a 17-acre parcel that can now have three lots on it, 60% impervious coverage. We have had chronic flooding problems on Everett's Road. OEM and the search team are out there, and the police out there all the time, putting barriers across that. So to increase the impervious coverage from 35 to 60%, plus increase, reduce the amount of landscaping in the parking lot and landscaping requirements. You know, we fight tooth and nail all the time to say we want one per eight in the, in the parking lots, the landscape islands, because it gives so many benefits to our community with aesthetics, with increased impervious area, I mean pervious areas, the aesthetics of the properties when they have that, that increased landscaping, and then the 15% landscape requirement. Well, yes, I acknowledge that the buff, there is now going to be a required 100-foot buffer in the rear of the property. I believe this applicant would have been required to do a 75-foot one anyway, because if it was a business use adjacent to a residential, so we're only getting 25, four feet more. So I guess those types of things, along with the intensity of the new uses that are proposed, just, it, it gives me some real agita, and at this point, I would feel really hard saying that this is consistent with our master plan.
But just, we, we always get confused over this. Our role is not to determine whether it's consistent with the master plan. Our role is to, to make a finding that it's not inconsistent.
So I find that binding, that it is not inconsistent with our master plan, because of all the issues that I brought forth. I think, you know, I totally acknowledge this area is in need of redevelopment. I just question, given that we just had the recent history of going through applications that were negotiated redevelopment agreement, and understanding what role then the planning board and the limits that the planning board has around those applications when it comes before the board. I just, I guess I'm more hesitant about making sure we get this redevelopment agreement right before we move ahead. So that's where I would respectfully ask that this be additional further discussion. I know the chair and I had asked that the planning board possibly be looped in for some discussions. That didn't happen. So I guess, you know, that's, that's my piece, I'll just, you know, that's where I am on it, so.
And in my opinion, and I, I concur with the vice chair, I'm not walking back from what we did in 2020. This is an area in need of redevelopment, it clearly is. But there are things here that I see as inconsistent with what we have been trying to do, or concerns that we have. Certainly the stormwater, and vice chair also sits on the Board of Adjustment, and this has been a discussion item.
Flemington Concrete, when it came in, you know, they were sent back to do some additional data assessment on the flooding issues along Everett's Road, because they were proposing a very, they were actually proposing one of the uses that's going to be permitted of a contractor yard, with a lot of vehicle storage and, you know, it may not be impervious now, but it probably will be in the future. So, you know, I just think it warrants a lot of thought, so.
I, I assume it's appropriate for me to mention this, there was an applicant that was declined by this board two years ago, after the area in need of redevelopment. The size of the building was, it did meet the 35-foot height. This is now allowing it to be 50 feet. Sitting up on a ridge with residential area across the tracks and down the hill. But it was, it was a unanimous judgment of this board at the time not to approve that application for reasons such as the height of the building and the lights that came with it, and I know there's mention of lights here as well, and some forgiveness on lighting, and it just seems like to me, like it's a step in a different direction. I think it needs more work. I guess that kind of sums it up for me. Anyone else on the board? Comments?
So are you making a motion to?
No, I was seeking. Let me, let me, let me actually read the law.
Yeah.
Section 26 says, "Within 35 days after referral, the planning board shall have a report inclu- including identification of any provisions in the proposed development regulation revision or amendment, which are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning those inconsistencies and any other matters as the board deems appropriate." So the law actually requires you to look at this particular ordinance if you're going to deem it inconsistent, and specifically identify those provisions in the ordinance that you deem inconsistent, and which you wish the governing body or township committee to revisit. A general statement to the governing body that it's inconsistent with the master plan would, would not meet the burden that Section 26 imposes upon you in making that finding.
So it needs to be specific.
You've got, you've got to look at things in the ordinance.
I could go through, I have articulated, I went through the proposed ordinance and identified those areas where I...
Well, someone, someone should, should, should do that, and then if the board is inclined to find those are inconsistencies, someone can make a motion after the specific provisions were identified.
So she identified them.
Well, I, I could go through based on the ordinance that we were given tonight.
Yes.
Say, page, you know, you know, so I guess the concern regarding the inconsistencies related to the permitted principal uses specifically...
And we're looking at page three of the ordinance, okay.
Item 1B, when you start including that item of manufacturing, processing, fabricating, is more intense. The contractor trade and storage, and the wholesale retail storage of good and retail sales. Those, those areas specifically are much a higher level of intensity than the previous B5 zone contemplated, and warrant some additional discussions. The other area, I feel, warrants some additional, under item, page 4, item D, the bulk requirements. The concern with the impervious coverage going of 60% when the zone currently is 35%, given the flooding that's currently experienced on Everett's Road. You know, the height of the building, it sounds like, from what the mayor mentioned, I mean, the chair mentioned, was an issue in previous applications, so we'd respectfully ask that the height, the 50-foot height, be, be looked at again. You know, I, we didn't get a chance to look at the internal three-foot setback. I've never heard of that in an application, usually when someone comes in and subdivides, it's a separate parcel. So I'm not sure exactly what that means, so we respectfully ask for clarification on what the minimum side yard internal setback is meant to be. There are some issues, I think we, we need to be, further clarification, the modifications to the parking standards. You know, we're currently under item E1, retail, we require, I believe it's four per thousand, and this is now... And for wholesale, it's three per 1,000, and this is one per 5,000. So it seems like we're significantly reducing the parking, and given that we've had some applications where that's become an issue of not enough parking, we need to look at that as well. The other major areas that I'll focus on is the, while we acknowledge that this does require a 100-foot rear yard buffer, our current ordinance would already have required when you have an high-intensity use next to a low-intensity use. Jeff, is that a 75-foot buffer? It would have been previously required a 75-foot buffer. So the compensation gained by the additional 25-foot of buffering to then not require the applicant under the landscaping requirements on page 7I, 3A, of one parking lot landscape aisle for every 20, when we currently have fairly fought hard to protect the one per eight because of the aesthetics, beauty, the benefits of having landscaping in the parking lot, in, along with the 5% landscaping provision under that Section 3A, where we require 15% of the parking lot to be landscaped. This is a highly visible property, and if we're going to allow it to become paved over, we just, you know, we want it to look good, you know. Those are the major areas. There are some other minor areas regarding the loading spaces. I find it very confusing when it said a minimum of one, but a maximum of one for the loading spaces. I'm not quite sure how that would work. Seems like you only have to have one, you know. And, and given that we, if there are proposed truck warehousing, manufacturing, processing, fabricating now being permitted, and you're only going to require one loading space, again, it doesn't seem like it fits the use, so. Those are the major areas where I just, with respect, I, I see that there's some inconsistency, and therefore this would not be consistent with our master plan.
So that's the basis of your motion for a report back to the Township Committee concerning the inconsistencies.
Correct.
Before someone makes that motion, where was, where is the section about the last item you were saying, the loading, so the buffering?
Is parking standards E, well, that was a parking standard, and then F3 is loading. Yes, F3, where it says a minimum of one, but a maximum of one.
Okay, thank you.
I think you'll have to also go to the audio on this, Taylor.
Yeah.
Oh, I will.
If this is adopted, and I don't know if it will be or not, so.
So, I would just clarify that it's a minimum of one loading space per tenant, and a maximum of one loading space per 20,000 square feet, whichever is greater. So there are two different standards, it's not a minimum of one, maximum of one, it's minimum one per tenant. So you could have a 100,000-square-foot building with one tenant. The idea is to limit, so there's not too many loading spaces where you would have too many impacts from too many trucks. That's, that's the reasoning behind that.
Yeah, I mean, James just pointed out in the redevelopment plan, it does say that a minimum one per tenant and one per 20, okay. I, it, you know, again, I think it could be clarified. I, I just, Jessica, I think it would have been helpful for us to say, in an industrial building, we currently would require X number of loading zones, or a manufacturing would have been this, so that we understand where is, where's the 1,000 to 20,000 fall within that range, do you, do you know?
Um, I don't have that with me right.
Okay.
And I guess I have a question, I don't know if it goes towards the inconsistencies, but we don't have an applicant for this. We're requiring the applicant to deal with the Everett Road jug handle, which we all know is a problem. Not to mention school bus traffic, but it's, it's a big problem with turning radiuses for trucks and all the rest. Shouldn't that be addressed first and receive Department of Transportation approval before we start giving or granting concessions from our ordinance? Just throwing it out to the other board members, I mean... Just throwing it out to the other board members. I mean, it seems like one should be taken care of before the other.
So it's only for specific uses. So if there's a wholesale retail and storage use that would generate the level of traffic that would require improvements. To that jug handle, then it would be required. And there is a redevelopers, so that entity does understand what these requirements are. It's not an application before the board yet, but there's a redeveloper that's negotiating with the governing body.
Thank you, Vice Chair. You did a great job of catching the details there. I don't have anything else.
So I guess I'll, I'll put the motion out to say that this is not consistent. With our master plan based on the, the, the items articulated. Was it?
As set forth in your previous.
Litany.
Litany and, and testimony, which, uh, would, would be incorporated into a report should the motion be seconded and passed.
I second.
Sorry. Uh, Chairman, Mr. Edward Eddings?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, means a finding of inconsistencies and a report back to the governing body based upon Ms. Drew's testimony.
Vice Chair, Ms. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robyn for two?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon?
Yes.
Mr. James Miller?
Yes.
Very good. So Taylor, you get the unenviable task of writing that all up. And, uh. I, I suggest you circulate it to us.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And thank you for the detail. Okay. Next up then are the minutes from the May eighth, twenty twenty four meeting. We have received those in advance. Anyone have any comments or changes?
Actually, do you have a recommendation?
Okay.
And it's page five, right? Um, second paragraph down. I just wanted to clarify where it says, um, fellow committee members are currently working. Uh, we're not currently working. I would change that language and strike currently working to say looking into conducting a study.
Okay.
Thank you.
You did say that. That's exactly how you said it. Okay, any other changes or questions to this? They have a motion to approve with the change. On page five, right?
Chairman, Mr. Edward Eddings?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Ms. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robyn for two? Mr. Scott McDade?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon?
Yes.
Mr. James Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no resolutions this evening. Uh, we have some folks with us in the room. I don't know if we have any who are virtual.
No.
But if there are any comments that any citizens would like to, uh, come up and address the board on. Other than items further down on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. There being none, we can move on to the first public hearing of the evening, which is Calvary Presbyterian Church.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Steven Gruenberg, Gruenberg Law Office on behalf of the applicant. Calvary Presbyterian Church of Amwell. Um, this is our application for minor site plan and certification of a conditional use. That, um, has been long in, in waiting for this family of the pastor and his family. It's an application for minor site plan to allow for additions to the existing parish house. And the reason for the, uh, need for an addition is that. Pastor Bush and his wife, when they first started this process, had a child with twins on the way. Now they have four children. And they need a couple of extra bedrooms. Um, the church is supportive of that. Um, and, um. If this was just a single family house, which is essentially what it was, we wouldn't even be here. But because it's on the church property. Um, it technically requires minor site plan and because. A house of worship is a permitted conditional, it's a conditional use in the zone. Um, and allows for a parish house, technically we require minor site plan approval. If it was a single family house, they just go in for building permits, but that's why we're here. Um, I have three witnesses. This evening, we have no variance relief that's required. We did provide notice of hearing and I circulated that. Uh, to the board, uh, in advance.
Jurisdiction is, is proper.
Thank you.
I've reviewed that council.
Thank you. And I have three witnesses, Pastor Christopher Bush. Um, our engineer Eric Rupnerain and, uh, our architect Ralph Fenelli.
And if all of you gentlemen would stand and raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in connection with this application. So help you God.
Yes.
You're all sworn in. Our board professionals have previously been sworn in and remain under oath through the balance of this hearing.
Thank you. Pastor Bush, why don't you tell the board, uh, who you are and your position with Calvary Orthodox Presbyterian Church?
Sir, you can sit in that chair and use that microphone. Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the pastor of Calvary Presbyterian Church in Amwell, been pastor for almost seven years there.
And why don't you describe, um, what's on the property right now in terms of the church and the house?
Sure, um, there's a church building. And, uh, there's a house.
And how many bedrooms are in the house right now?
There are upstairs, there's two bedrooms. Wife and I are in one with our six week old. And, and the other bedroom is our three oldest boys. Into our, to Saturday and.
So you have four children ages four to six weeks in, um, one bedroom. Well, you've been with you and your wife in two bedrooms.
Yes.
Okay. And the purpose of our application is to add two bedrooms for your family, correct? Are initially our plan showed five bedrooms and we're, um. We're going to commit to only having four bedrooms, correct? And we'll have our architect testify with respect to that fifth bedroom not being a bedroom, but it will be, um, a, a, an office, correct?
Correct.
Um, and the, the twins, just to answer the question for the four bedrooms, will be sharing a bedroom, correct?
Yes.
So that works out. Okay, um. We submitted, there was questions about the septic, uh, approval for four bedrooms and we provided a copy of that yesterday. That we already received Hunter County Board of Health approval for four bedrooms, correct?
Correct.
And that, and the house of worship, the church has its own septic system that's existing, correct? And that won't be affected by this project at all. I think that's all I have for you. Any questions from the board? No, I'll throw it out to the public, although we don't have anybody this evening. So. Thank you.
Thanks.
You must be very tired.
I'm tired. I was just thinking about it.
You notice during the swearing in, I didn't say or otherwise affirm.
Yeah.
I figured I was safe with that one.
Yeah.
Mr. Rupnerain, will you please give the board the benefit of your qualifications briefly?
Oh, he's been before this board any number of times. So welcome back.
And slowly.
And slowly.
Eric, why don't you, uh, show the board the plan that what we have up here is what has been submitted without revision, correct? So it doesn't need to be separately marked again.
Correct. This is the minor site plan that my office submitted. And what you can see are all the uses and conditions on the property. Um, the church building is located. And approximately that second is a property for less than that's. Like one is the parking lot, sort of, the, the. Right, walk route two oh two. Um, the actual parsonage building is located in the north and it is this smaller building. That's approximately in that corner of the site, that corner of the corner. The two separate systems, uh, that Pastor Bush mentioned earlier. Um, there are the most circumstantial separate system for the church that's located solidly existing church, church. The subject system, the existing system for the parsonage is located to the east or to the rear of the parsonage. What the applicant is proposing is no modification of the church or the separate system. However, we are going to abandon the existing separate system for parsonage and the new system that's built. Um, as best we can indicate, we already have. Presently, along that northernly boundary line of the property, um, it's heavily protected. On top, we're here today. Some, some, some. Along the, the property line where it is. Pretty much the same chance whether it's from standing or if it's also for the system gas. That area is heavily loaded. There's large mature pine protection that's located. The construction in the app is proposing a lot of. Aside from that, yeah, it's not proposing any other.
Um, the board professionals had a couple of, uh, reports, Mr. Darkey's report, um, raised. I think we've agreed to do everything in Mr. Darkey's report in terms of plan revisions. There's two questions I think he had was the first was, uh, um. Uh, number one on an ADA space that's not reflected. Can we reflect an ADA space on, on the, uh, plan? And on. Six A and B, he raised questions about the septic and the number of bedrooms. And I think we answered that, that we, and supplied that we provided. The county board of health approval and, um, we're reducing the number of bedrooms to four bedrooms and not five. So we're compliant with that. I think everything else in his report, unless he has a question about anything he would address or are willing to address.
No, I, I think with the applicant's testimony this evening and with the information that was submitted yesterday. It, it addressed, I made many of the questions that were, or comments we had in our review memo and. The remaining comments are, are some minor, um, detailed, uh, matters that, that they also agree to. To address. I don't really have any questions for the applicant.
And Mr. And Mr. Bacarello's correspondence of, I believe, July third. Raised, uh, a couple of questions. The first was testimony regarding the septic capacity, which I think we addressed. And that was on number four. And number five. Um, the applicant requested waivers regarding aquifer test and wetland analysis and report. I think we touched on that, but can you address the well and the septic? Uh, well, the well situation. And wetlands.
And far as to the well, there is a huge people on the, that's present, so far. This could be part of the challenge. Will this date, certainly these are actually a little deal. There's some well, there's a, we are paying for current. We believe that we have. And that existing well supply the future of the, of the four back of the parsonage. System of all had a fairly good. Or. I just submit a labor request as part of the application. And. Based on the contest that was essentially completed when the well was built. The well was pumped for about five hours. Which the water purposes have gaps and there was. Loaded frog and the water. So.
Sure.
In terms of the wetlands on the property, I welcome property general. All here is a point of construction. From the back of the existing parsonage. All the way to that piece of the property, I can repair the property. It's all either a market or it is sort of. There was no evidence of wetland on the property. Um, the only wetlands I can find was on the GIS thing. At the base and it showed wetlands along the property, pretty much along the. Along the street. And that's true. That area is about.
So with respect to the environmental commission comments about the, uh, stream and riparian buffers and wetland delineation. Do you have an opinion as to whether those are required?
I don't feel either one of those are necessary primarily because in terms of what. We're not doing those in any. And so even my period of power. On this, which means it's not a seamless stream. So. At a very minimum, they'll have either. Or one of the maximum. And even one of those classifications will be. Or. From where that.
And I think we addressed the other comments and the environmental commission comments. Through the other board professionals testimony. I think that's all I have for Mr. Rupnerain. Jeff, you have something?
Questions just based on the memo.
I just had a few, um, questions and clarifications just based on the memo. Um, if just part of the conditional use, uh, standard, just. Providing testimony regarding the surrounding uses. And then as well as. Item number seven and eight. It's.
It was, obviously we're, um, willing to do everything else in your report, including seven and eight zoning permits. And a found, a foundation location required prior, prior to framing. And I explained to my client. That that was something that was going to be asked for in light of recent events in the township. And at the township wanting location surveys before things are built to make sure that. People don't have to come back before the board asking for variances. So we understand that that will be a condition of. Um, with respect to the conditional use standards, I think that we adhere to all the conditional use standards and don't. Require any variance relief or, uh, design waivers in connection with the application. And, um. I, I think we satisfy that. There's something specific that you had in mind.
No, I was just, I was just gonna add that I guess the surrounding uses, um. There aren't any commercial or residential that are adjacent to the. To the lot, um, just. Was wanting some testimony for that, but it's, it's just, um. It's provided on the plan.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I just had the comment and as well as EC is just confirmation that, uh, stormwater is not required, just to address that for the record.
Sure. Okay. Any, uh, board questions? No, and just because we need to do this, if anybody from the public has any questions on that testimony, speak up now, please. There being none, thank you. Ask Mr. Fenelli to come on down. Mr. Fenelli, you, you, uh, put something up. Is that identical to what's already been submitted to the board or are there any changes to it? Is that different? Is that what's there now or, or is that on another? Want to just go to that one first and we'll explain it. I'm sorry. Mr. Fenelli? Mr. Finelli qualifications or? Please get before the benefit of your qualification. Okay, now you're acceptable to the board, thank you. Thank you. Please sheet that's up there, it's already been submitted, you identify what the improvements are.
So if you're looking at the four client first, see the third idea. Bottom left would be. The roof is twenty four by thirty. Four and everything exists in the house. And this is. So what we propose to do is we. And to be able to connect the house with really traditional spaces, garage, mudroom, kitchen, living, dining. It's all. Nothing here, nothing like that, just one space. On the second floor, that translates into four bedrooms. And one shared bathroom. Bedroom dimension of the space.
But but there are five bedrooms.
Yes, I'm going to get that.
Okay.
I'll come back to that.
Okay.
On the fourth, the above down elevation, just the elevation of the two oh two elevation. Because you add. Style house, the connection on the mudroom and turn the one part garage into the two part garage. We can imagine, but just to clarify the bedroom count. When we mentioned the existing house, there is a room in the first floor that the pastor's using in an office. And of course, that was, you know, a few kids ago. So now we've got a few more living spaces. We do need a space for, you know, an actual tighter office, something to speak to someone. Have some sense of privacy. And I think it's just a better difficult plan. So when the church went into health department. The charge was for four bedrooms. So we're not proposing this first floor space, we consider that would not be a benefit. The pastor's office, the rest of the space is as you would find in. So there isn't any privacy again.
So what's labeled on the first floor as a guest bedroom, I think is what it was, will now be labeled as the pastor's office, correct?
Correct, so this is the exact same drawing.
And that one we will have to mark as exhibit A1 since that's different. And it's very important that we condition have let the board know that we are only going to have four bedrooms and that our septic approval is only for four bedrooms. And we don't want to have to go back before the board of.
That's why I questioned the five, right? Because that triggers.
Because we need to get this thing built as soon as possible for this family. So we're committing to only having four bedrooms. Those are pretty pictures, if the board has any questions about that, I think we have a gist of what the improvement. I don't have any questions, any board members have questions on the architectural plans? Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Jeff?
One question, if these are the plans that are going to be submitted for. Where they take in the tax for. Is there process?
Should they relabel anything so that it doesn't state shift bedroom then?
Well, that's.
Is that, is that, is that in that copy before you, that's A1? No, the one in front of you, those extra copies, is that A1? Yeah, I'll. Yeah, I, yeah, just I want to do the resolution, I have it.
But that does address your question.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
No, you can just leave that, I'll be getting.
That is all our testimony, this family's desperate need of admission for these bedrooms. And we would really ask for your approval this evening so that we can get going. Well, I have one more thing, I have to again ask if anybody from the public has any questions. There being nobody here in the room or online this evening, you're off the hook, there's no questions. With that, I would like to have a motion on approval of the Calvary Presbyterian Church minor site plan for a two story addition.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Gettings.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Stana Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yeah.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Good, thank you, Pastor Bush, best of luck to you. We need more babies. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next up is Magna Power Electronics, Inc., minor site plan for a six hundred foot square, six hundred square foot mechanical shed and water cooling tank.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Steven Gruenberg, Gruenberg Law Office on behalf of the applicant Magna Power Electronics, Inc. This is a minor site plan evening. We are proposing a minor site plan to do some exterior improvements, but very minor in nature over existing impervious coverage that doesn't trigger any variance relief or actually any need for a notice appearing, so I didn't do one for this evening. I was tempted to do this as a site plan waiver application, but thought it more appropriate to do this as a minor site plan. I have one witness this evening, which is our engineer, Mr. Artman, and I would ask that he be sworn.
Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so have you got or otherwise affirmed, sir?
Yes.
And our board professionals, as in the prior hearing, remain under oath.
Thank you. Mr. Artman, need to present his qualifications.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so please do.
Good now, very good. Again, Mitchell Artman, principal of the Reynolds Group, licensed professional engineer in the state for over thirty years. Over that time, I've done site plan applications before townships throughout the state. I've appeared throughout Hundred and County probably over fifty times. It's been quite some time before this board, last year is before your board of adjustment. But on this particular property, I did handle two separate applications for Magna Power. So I have appeared before this board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Artman, you're acceptable.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We're yet the board to the site and we have an exhibit this evening, which we're going to have. Exhibit A1, if you could identify that.
Certainly, so this is the plan that was submitted in the set. Labeled a minor site plan M1, the difference here is just that we've color rendered it for the purpose of presentation tonight. So we have Royal Road on the bottom of the site here. North is basically up into the right and we have the outline that's we have color rendered in in greens, that's pretty much the outline of the property. Lot thirty six oh two, lot twenty one. It's approximately seven point two five seven acres. And we're at the end of Royal Road where it comes down to Pennsylvania Avenue and then makes that right turn to head out to to the east. There's an industrial site adjacent to our property, basically to the south. Across the lot here, it's vacant and it's developed. So it right across is big and there's the property that frontage is there. But in the recent years, there was a road that was punched through and back behind, it's not visible really, except for the roadways, some light industrial buildings that have been built in that easterly direction. But again, we're at that north end of Royal Road. The site is in the I two industrial zone. What we have shaded here is kind of L or, you know, upside down U shaped building there has been developed over time. It was expanded over the years. At this point, it's pretty much built out to approximately sixty nine thousand square feet. And Magna Power has owned and operated this site that whole time and they're Magna Power Electronics, a high end electronics production and equipment company. The owners are here, if you need any explanation, specific operations. But they operate, you know, an excellent facility here for many years. I've been involved with them over that time. So that's pretty much the existing conditions. Let me just say, I'll add the parking is all shown here, basically in the front of the site along Royal. As you loop around the back of the property is where the loading dock areas are and some warehouse parking spaces are also back. The present mechanical systems, condensers, et cetera, are also in the back of the building, particularly in the south corner, which I'll get to, which is where the proposed new mechanical equipment is shown to be placed.
So why don't you direct the board to where our proposed improvements are and discuss how we're going to protect them with followers?
Certainly, so again, the mechanical equipment, basically the purpose is to support existing operations, manufacturing and processing inside the building. So that's the reason it's on the southerly side of the building and close proximity of the building because there will be utility connections from one to the other. So it's a six hundred square foot, we have rendered in brown on the plan here, shown on the building. That shed portion of the project's just about sixteen and a half feet high. Adjacent to that is a water tank and that tank will be elevated. And the top of that will be approximately twenty three feet high. There's a plan in your set and I'll show you an exhibit of that shortly. And those again will deal with the processing water, so it will be will be pipes between the building. Mechanical equipment building, it's a heating and cooling process building based, excuse me, a heating and cooling process that's associated with the building. As that hot water temperature builds up, it will then get piped to the tank, which operates as basically a cool, an elevated cooling tank. And then it'll go back to the building, so it's a whole closed loop process. And again, the purpose is is to support the existing operations in the building. Again, both are on this southerly side of the building and they're going to be bollards around both the tank and the building for protection. Because as we stated, there is still loading and truck access in that part of the property.
So Mr. Bacarella, my client and I walked the site today and we noticed that there's two dumpsters in the location.
Yes.
And overhead doors that he's looking for some testimony about where we're looking at. Where they are now and what we're going to do with them.
Certainly, so the overhead door, there is, you'd have to look close, but there's a marking on the plan and that symbol indicates areas on the building where there's no overhead door and I'm pointing to it now on the southerly face of the building. So between the proposed shed and the curb line, there's still fifteen feet of driveway access. So that's plenty of access. The the main loading for truck loading are further to the west. Those are smaller box trucks, sometimes other trucks that need to side load or offload inside the building. Those aren't the tailgate type loading, so that fifteen foot wide is plenty for access to the building. The dumpsters discussed are basically sited against that curb line right now. And they're really going to be placed just the two places, we're going to tuck them in basically in and around. There are two right now and we have a couple of locations that are possible, really three locations possible. I will work with the client and delivery operations so that it's slow around the safe process.
That location of the dumpsters, is there sufficient room for loading and unloading at those overhead doors?
Yeah, it would be room to pick up those dumpsters and still getting them loaded. Also, I want to point out that as the shape of building was basically, I'm satisfied with it. Royal Road really have hidden behind that section on the road, the driveway, you're next to down, you see down, straight down the driveway. South. Little block that you basically. So there's good screening where. It's dated, we're all something on top, it's just big asphalt pavement, no purpose, no change, great effect, so there's more impact. As, as I said, it would be I two zone. Setback requirements. Fire over fifty five.
Do we also meet the height requirements for both structures?
Yes, we do. And so. I mean, three feet is maximum, they just open as high as that, we are. And as for FAR, the site has always been well underneath the small edition, seventy five percent allowed. We're under the edition twenty four percent.
Why don't we show the board again what what the the mechanical room and the tank look like? This has, this needs to be worked as well. And I forgot to hand them out. Well, I only have A one. Let's say.
This is the same. And we'll give that so the board can see. Lower left. So basically, the lower cooling tank in the lower left. The height of that tank itself is just under eleven feet at the top. And as I said, that's going to be elevated basically. Just about forty three feet. In the background, I'm showing from this view, it would be the shed building that you see there. The water bag is basically an oversized landscape contract. More than that, that's the day. Be set up on. As you can see on the ditch portion on top of the right. The existing building, the pipe that connects to the shed. Put it aside the shed. It now flows. Where it cools again, the state of the system on that shed.
Now, is this, is this elevated for airflow? Just trying to understand, I, the drawing's very clear that it's elevated, is it for airflow purposes? To assist in the cooling?
It's going to be a closed closed system, but just basically.
Thank you. I don't have anything else for Mr. Artman unless he does. Yeah, Mr. Bacarella's correspondence, I think we've addressed all of the issues. We agree to do everything in here, which is zoning permits, which is required for the project number seven. He wanted to visit the site, which we did today and I think we were both like amazed at how cool the inside of that building was and what a clean operation this is. And Hundred and County Planning Board and Township Agency reviews, there were none, so I think we're in good shape unless the board has any questions. Any board questions?
Any board questions? Jeff, okay.
One question just based on, I don't know the. Site. I've tried looking at reviews of approvals.
I'm not quite sure what you're asking us to function on.
The dumpster that they're proposing is not. I don't know, was there a dumpster, was there as part of the original plan? No, when I saw your time and I looked back as well, the prior plan, it looked like there was an add, but not an enclosure per se. I think potentially. Let me switch back to A1. I have to say that the third first phase was only the smallest part was developed prior to the process. Some perhaps. But it does seem to be that it's always been shielded behind the building, so I developed that. Any other enclosure, as I said, here's the. Professional's on the back here with a blank wall, so it's not assuming it for safe from any. Obviously, we wanted to place that accessible.
Just if I, you'll propose a location, work with Jeff and everybody and make sure we're good.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, we don't want to go back and start modifying things. I think, I think we're all nodding.
The record shall reflect everybody's.
Yes, very good, affirmatively. Okay. Any board questions? I think so, I think we're good, I have to ask the public, there is no public here, unfortunately, this evening in the room or online. Okay.
My stellar legal argument and subnation is please grant our approval.
And thank you for carrying this to July tenth, had you come in two weeks ago, we would have had a fifteen minute meeting.
You're very welcome.
That was better, yes, thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to approve Magna Power Electronics, Inc., the minor site plan for a six hundred square foot mechanical shed and water cooling tank?
Motion.
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yeah.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis Concanon. Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. I think we just have one item that's coming up on July twenty fourth, we already have the materials for that, right Taylor, I know I do. For William and Paul Nora, the preliminary major subdivision.
Yes, that's yours, Steve, right?
Yeah, that's a discussion just on the cluster.
It's a concept.
Was that a ten one concept plan?
It's the, the cluster concept, so that's why he had asked whether we needed to do notice on that, but I did use the notice.
Okay, okay. So this is an informal concept under ten one?
When you're saying ten one.
You, you say it's just a discussion on the cluster.
Your ordinance provision has like an informal, it has a requirement, so you have to discuss whether to proceed forward on the.
Oh, got it.
Before you go over through the whole rigmarole of revising the plan.
Understood. Right, right, I get it now, thanks.
It's not an approval either, so, but we know this for.
Got it, appreciate it, I know we've got people interested in this.
Very good.
You want a court reporter for that?
No, we're not gonna do a resolution, right?
Right.
No, I don't need one.
Well, I'm asking all meanings. All, all applicants should have one.
Yeah, we need a.
So.
Yeah, bring one in, bring it in then.
How do you think I do the minutes?
That's fine. I asked a question.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, Steve.
Okay. And with that, we're adjourned. See you on the twenty fourth.